Listen, while we're waiting to start the meeting, everyone has lots of listen out there. We had G. Minter and I attended, and I'll bring this up next Wednesday, the six to fix gala in Baltimore on Friday evening, and we were, there was a highly competitive grant process. I think they said there was twenty something or thirty something historic venues that they were looking at supporting, and it came down to, they narrowed it down to six, and we were very fortunate with our support from the town to get Holly Hall property. Anyone knows the Holly Hall property, the little Holly Hall mansion, has been chosen to receive a lot of support over the next year to get that project restored. And the financial impact will come from volunteer hours, as well as the Cordish Company who owns the property will be investing to get that property restored. And I stressed it, you know, that is our gateway coming into our town, even though the town officially starts on the other side of Route 40. But as you're coming into town, that was always the spot that you could see, and I hope that we can bring it back to its glory. They called it the, what was the words they used, the Great Dane?
The Grand Dame.
Or the Grand, the grandom of our county, and it's something we should be very proud of. We were very fortunate to get this moving in this direction. Very happy about it. Hey, there's Commissioner Biner. We have a call. So we have a call to start this workshop. Commissioner Mary Jo Jablonski, there was actually a debt in her family this morning with nephew, and she had to, she left to go be with family. Commissioner Van Ryn sent an email, I guess about an hour ago, said he would not be able to attend. So with that, let's start off with the first item that we have is the street sweeping services loop, certified seal. Mr. and Mrs. Graff, if you want to come up here. They've been sweeping the streets of the town for many, many years, and their contract is coming up for renewal, and they have submitted a proposal to the town to continue that contract that they believe they want a three-year contract. And they decrease the rate from ninety-five to one hundred dollars, which is not unreasonable. And they want to add some hours to it. But Mr. Graff, why don't you explain what the proposal means and what you do for us? A very extensive amount of work you do for us, and we appreciate it.
Basically, what we have been doing as of late is we sweep five hours a day on Tuesday, and five hours a day on Friday, ten hours a week. That consists of two hours in the center of town, which is pretty difficult to accomplish, and then we move outside the town to the next three hours, so forth. And that is either a neighborhood like Bullitt, Patriots Glen, Washington Woods, Chapel Run, turn west, we alternate. So throughout the course of the month, I don't know, did you get one of these?
I did not.
Okay. Everybody can take one of those. It's a little packet of some of the paperwork that we provide to Public Works and so on. We sweep the center of town, and then we do the outlying areas. Throughout the course of the month, we hope to accomplish every neighborhood at least once, hopefully. Now, that's getting harder and harder to accomplish in that five-hour allotment. So in a nutshell, what we were asking was some time, maybe a couple extra hours on a Monday, to specifically do one of the outlying areas. For instance, the Heights takes at least four, four and a half hours by itself to sweep. And as you know, there's a lot of trees in there, and there's a lot of little roadways and whatever. So if we go in town from six to eight and then try to jump out to the Heights and accomplish it from eight to eleven, it's a whole task, plus the sweeper needs water, so that's a little bit of time to bring. And then sometimes it fills up quicker than those five hours. Now, in that time, we take the material that we swept down to the landfill and dump it. And that's included in the shift, or as it is now, it's running over the shift. And on top of that, Mary prepares these reports. We pick out a route for the driver, which would be here, and then what we do is mark where we want him to go. And then throughout the course of the month, well, after that, he marks down what he accomplished. And then throughout the course of the month, the last page, we mark with a X where we have been or if we accomplished that area. That way, if Dan gets a call or anyone in the office gets a call as to the fact that they didn't see the sweeper, then we can simply, somebody can just simply get this report and look to see that we, in fact, were there, and how much water we used and what the weight was. And then we turn in our landfill slip, so on and so forth. So a lot of record-keeping as of late to justify our existence, where we've been and what areas we've hit due to the public outcry we've had. And you know, Robbie, I run the sweeper quite a bit, just, you know, to get these facts and figures, I mean, not the whole shift, but I run the sweeper just to see how things are going and what areas we missed, and where we can do better, and what's the best way to accomplish this. So we did a rate search.
What are the jumping of the waste? Because that, what's the process in which you dump the waste, how much has it accumulated in your runs for that time period to clean your truck up?
It depends, in the winter, when there's a lot of debris, it could run from anywhere from two, three, four tons to, I mean, there's, sometimes, you know, it's as low as one and a half.
I mean, when you go to dispense it?
Yeah.
Is it like a hose or something that you?
No, no, it's, the sweeper basically is like a trash truck. The whole back end of it opens up, and then they take us down to the landfill. Sometimes there's quite a bit of water mixed in there for dust control, so they put us in an area. But we basically go to the bottom of the landfill with all the trash.
Reason why I was asking, I was wondering if there's a process that we could probably use or to team up with the public work, maybe dump it into a truck when you're in town and then let the truck take it down? I was just asking that reason why.
We tried that for a number of years. We did buy a special sweeper that dumped into your hopper that was down at the Public Works. That sweeper was very costly. It wasn't really reliable because of all the features to take that much weight, lift it up in the air and dump it. And the time involved versus just scooting down to the landfill, it really didn't work out. No, we were there, and we ended up having to just sell that sweeper. Yeah, but no, it's a good thought, but, but we are moving that way. Next year, we're looking at another sweeper that's a little smaller. It would have to dump more often, but it would reach into that hopper.
The thirty-yard dumpster, you mean?
Yeah, the thirty yards. The problem is, the thirty-yard dumpster is tall.
Right.
Twenty would be more acceptable for the machines, but we're still working on that. But the one machine that we bought was supposed to take care of all that, and it just didn't work out.
Okay, thanks.
So in essence, we just dump with the rest of the trash trucks right now, and then that's usually at the end of the shift, the sweeper's large enough to make the four or five-hour shift.
So you're asking for how many additional hours per week?
Right now...
Five to six.
Right now, my, my idea would be, since we're having trouble getting to the center of town in our shift and getting this paperwork, right now, we're not being compensated for our paperwork. This has come about since the last contract to keep all these records. We used to just go out and sweep and come back. Now, with the outcry and accounting that we have to do, we've had to keep, we do about an hour per shift on paperwork. We want to keep our main route Tuesdays and Fridays. We want to stick with that. We've been doing that since eighty-six. Well, we started out with two hours, now we're up to five. I would like to still try to accomplish our sweeping from Tuesdays and Fridays. What I would like, in addition to the ten hours a week, Tuesdays and Fridays, I would like to come out Monday, four hours max, and do the outlying areas. Patriots Glen and Washington Woods, we could do in four hours. The Heights, it would take a whole Monday to get the Heights done. Down on Landing Lane, Ryland Homes, the Manor Loop, we only do the Manor Loop. That would be another section. Chapel Run, Chesapeake Corporate Center, that would be another day. So we would hop around and thoroughly clean the, what I call the outlying areas. Walnut Hill, Rudy Park, and everything by the firehouse would be another block. So that's what we're asking for specifically for outlying areas. Now, when we have a rainy day and don't get to sweep in town and he makes up his time, he will go exactly to an outlying area, and they make up a lot of ground, especially during leaf season and things like that.
What I can tell you is, many miles, as I put on my vehicle here, as many towns that I see across the state of Maryland, Delaware, Virginia, North and South Carolina, I challenge anyone to ever say that our streets are probably the cleanest streets that I have seen. You do a wonderful job for the town of Elton. I want to say that we could always do better, of course, but I am certainly willing to consider the extended time, and I would like for, hopefully, that maybe you have talked to Dan at Public Works, and one of the comments that was made at one of the meetings was that when we do the brass clipping collection in a certain neighborhood on a Tuesday, maybe Wednesday is the day that we should be doing that neighborhood. And that's, that might be something that we can coordinate with you so that we'll get that stain off of the street in a quicker fashion, if that makes sense.
It makes sense. One of the issues we have with that is when we combine with a sweeper, then everybody wants to start throwing everything out, you know? But no, that's good, that's a, that's a good idea. We try, I try to coordinate with them. I have their list, and we try to follow them around as much as we can. It's not an exact science.
And I don't want to get into too much detail about it, but I know that you have an eye out for Elton. Every day that you're driving that truck, and there's information that you've always shared with the board and the town, which is very important to us, and there is certainly a value to that. And that's very important to us, and the more communication we have back and forth, it's always, always good to have that, so.
I think you do a great job. I greet your driver around five-thirty when I see him, flash the lights off me. I come through the town, he's out there studying, you know, my truck.
Any comments, questions, Cheryl?
Yeah, you do a very good job. I know you drive it personally, but I think with the additional hours that you're asking for, certainly will, the objective would be to meet the total needs of the community, and then, but in fact, being the case, I see nothing wrong with that.
Another thing that would help with this is we start early on our main route. If we do an outlying area, we probably would try to adjust the time to like after eight o'clock so that more people can move out of the area and give us more space, you know, like Friendship Heights and over on the food street area and things like that. Sometimes we get there just to taste early. So it's a mixture, though. We try to beat the school board, but with that, then the residents are still there. So we do have to float around and try to adjust our time.
Well, very good. Thank you.
Great save, and then you got to juggle around your business hours, but I know that's what you try to do.
Yeah.
When you try to beat one, then you run into the other, so you got a good judgment act, you have to put up with this.
Thank you.
But you're doing a good job.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to link right into community cleanup. Mr. Dan Handling. Prepare for the audio, visual extravaganza. Oh, we got a, we got a... All right, so I'd like to see and like to hear. Happy anniversary to you.
Thanks for the great performance.
Thirty-seven years, Commissioner Biner's been married. Mr. Stein.
Hello, you.
I know you, George.
That's my attention. Okay, good to get here. Okay.
Yep.
All right. Good afternoon. Among the main calls you get from DPW, they always get confused with trash, some reason it's going to be about the trash calls. So the intention of my presentation today is to go over, basically, what we do, and how to pick up with waste management, and to go over all specifics about the trash collection itself. With me today is Mr. Mike Fang, who's the Public Sector Rep of this area, so he's very familiar with waste management. Waste management, before I get to the slides, I can talk about waste management in general, is that they're a very good contractor, and you can tell when we've rebuilt the workouts out, they have a very good value, and, you know, just from my DPW standpoint, they do a very good job for the town, so we do appreciate you being the service at Public Management Business. So based on that, that's where I think it's a good relationship, and we just want to clarify what we do, you know, how the relationship works, so that we can share it forward today. First thing I handed out is these are brochures that came through town. The first sheet has everything about the trash rules, and what we're going to go through here, we're going to go through the slide itself, so you can keep pictures. This particular one, we go through the website, as I told you before, I pulled you down, they're clarifying a few things with Mike up today, and we're clarifying it at different boards and putting that on the website. And the second sheet that goes with the brochure is, this is a brochure, and we can actually put these things out, you know, they're available in the public, so we did clean it for a while, so this is pretty...
So it's like posted on the website?
No, we cleaned it up, and now it's going to be posted. With that in mind, let's go through trash collection itself. Basically, the trash routes are Mondays and Tuesdays, recycling dates are Thursday and Fridays, holidays, when it's a Monday holiday, throws everything off, but the good thing about waste management is, you know, they can still pick up the stuff. The only holidays which changed the routes at all are New Year's Eve, Memorial Day, Fourth of July, Labor Day, Thanksgiving, Christmases. Other than that, if it's President's Day, if it's Columbus Day, doesn't change. In other words, and we always put it out to the public, we put it out on the website, we put it out in our, I don't know, your message thing, it doesn't change, you know? We use stuff out, there's no deviation, so.
Everything rolls a day. It's a holiday, it's Labor Day and Memorial Day, Monday, everything will roll a day, so we work up through Saturday. But it's like Thanksgiving, it's a Thursday, those first three days will not be affected for that week. It's only the last two days of the week that will be affected.
The only thing that changes slightly, there's an impending snow storm, that's the word, constantly on the phone with Mike, figure how it goes. If there is a change because of the weather, unless they close the state of Delaware down roads, they're typically ready to pick it up later, it's a lot easier that way. But if there is, if there is a change, we try to hit social media as best we can. Hopefully, it doesn't happen too often, but when it does, we kind of look at it. That's right, there you go. Okay, trash collection itself, okay? Residents are allowed to place two trash cans. Regular trash cans are huge toders, toders, ninety-six gallons, something like that, maximum for curbside collection. Trashable cycle containers, wood lids should be used to protect trash from the cycle bowl, you know, from the water, because it gets kind of, it's kind of great for that one. And regular trash cans can be used for recycling, where we have stickers that put the cans provided by the town. So if they have an old existing trash can, we can recycle it, not a problem, you know? They can pick up the sticker from here, from Town Hall, whatever is necessary to recycle it as well, which very clearly is just the way it is.
Is there any big way for people to have medical issues? I do know that I just got two trash cans for a neighbor who is twenty-four, seven care, and their accumulation of trash is probably two to three trash cans. I mean, you know, I noticed that, so would they take that into consideration, someone that has a medical issue?
Yeah, we would try to communicate and making sure what was going on, you know? If that's, if that is the case, yes.
If you count lots of, we can tell, but we're always conscious of talking to waste management.
Which you'll see the driver do, is if it's not a, if it's not an abuse situation, it's just an extra smaller can, or if it's just, you can tell, you can pretty much tell when someone has issues in their personal life where they need to put extra out. If it was a constant, you know, six, seven cans, then we probably would talk to Dan about what was going on.
The drivers are pretty quick about it, you know? We look for, they're very good between, we'll get to construction debris in a little bit, but if it's a part-time business, they'll figure it out pretty quick, because you can tell week after week, push it at the same driver, same consistency. They know it's normal, they know where it's, you know, so it's different, it's kind of strange. Between that, between move house, between, you know, baking houses, loud trash, they're pretty good to pick up what's what. When that happens, they return back to us, and they return back to that law.
I have a couple of questions. Number one, a lot of the totes have lids on them, and certainly, a lot of people claim that they become loose because the truck, everything does a lot of jerking, whether that's true or not, I don't know. And then secondly, how detrimental are the cans or the totes without lids, because oftentimes, you know, you get water in there as well, which compact the trash that you may already have? Is there any way to make a correction, either one of that?
Well, you'd rather have lids on it, it keeps the animals away, it keeps the tonnage down, because you pay tonnage.
Right.
You know, so the water gets in there and things like that. Now, inevitably, any piece of equipment, whether it's a cart-type situation, does it jerk it? Yeah, because these guys are taught to put it on a, put it on a hydraulic lift, because you don't want them hurting their back. So, yeah, does that hydraulic lift yank it sometimes when it hits it? It does, and it's almost, you know, I don't know if it's, you can make sure they don't come up as hard, things like that, so we do take it through maintenance to make sure. But we try to keep the lids on them, if they're broken lids, and we do try to replace them.
Drove a hole in the bottom of it.
I had one damaged, and I called Public Work, but in the meantime, I put a screw in to where the one side came out, but I do know that I didn't damage it, and it got damaged like twice, and then I questioned about it, so I understand.
It can happen, that's true.
So where's the screw? It's on the side, there, you know, notch of, the hook comes from, and I put a screw down on top of, just to keep it from falling out of there.
This slide itself tells you about the success of our trash collection program. You can tell, the previous years, I couldn't get from Siskiyou County, they could find it, but anyway, for the last two years, you know, the main thing is, everything's in tonnage, so you look at, you know, two thousand thirteen, you had forty-six, thirty-one tons, two thousand fourteen, forty-seven, sixty-five tons, which is, it's nice. Remember, everybody should be concentrating on what is going to the right-hand side of the recycling rate, shoving the bears and pushing, you know? Look at, look at the single-street recycler, you know, we had seven hundred forty-six tons in two thousand thirteen, seven hundred seventy-seven tons in two thousand fourteen. That's the stuff that Waste Management's picking up. Other recycling waste comes from our shop, you know, when it drops off itself. So the recycling rate, I think for the gathering, shoots fifteen percent. We're at twenty-six and twenty-four, for sure, that shuts out a little bit, but we're doing a good job recycling, and hopefully, you know, to continue, you know, supporting the community, though, which is keep recycling, because the better off it is, because it's in the landfill, and it can be very efficient, so, you know, we do encourage recycling, as much as possible, and, you know, whenever it's here, speak for itself, so it's a very successful program. Okay, here we go. Now, this is where it starts getting this stuff. Household appliances and furniture, this is what we do at Elton, okay? Current trash collection prevents one large household appliance item or one large piece of furniture. What that means is, if you have a television, it's okay, we'll pick up the television. If you have a mattress and a box spring, we'll pick that up, maybe we'll do that, okay? Any type of wooden furniture is not acceptable for trash collection. That ties into the construction debris, we'll talk about that in a minute. If either these items are collected at the same time, these are collected the same day as regular trash, we bring them up curbside, or one uses juices, then we'll actually take them up that way. Going back to the appliances, if you have an appliance that uses freon, if it's a refrigerator, it's a freezer, you have to first, you just can't put it out there, Waste Management will not touch it, unless somebody actually drains the freon first, has to the freon removed professionally before it being placed curbside, and you have to have a sticker to make sure that the freon is, is it a secop, Mike, or what's?
Yeah, it is a secop. Oh, it's collecting, yes, it is a secop.
So there will be a stick on there?
No, no, what happens to the professional, if he does it, he'll have a sticker, a little sticker. Although that, they just will not touch the, the material itself, because it's a refrigerator, it's a refrigerator, three, 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 what else? This is the refrigerator.
Some air conditioners. Was that?
No, I don't think they have freon.
No?
No. I think some air conditioners do, you know, they have, they have them in, yeah, those window units do, but it's mostly your refrigerators and your freezers that we come across that.
I thought you had items that were either less than four feet or something.
What's that, three ones?
Oh, that's, that's not, no.
They won't do your lids, yeah. Yeah, they, your lids is...
Well, we do your lids.
Yeah. Right, we'll do it, okay. Has this material of any type will not be collected, you know, paint, paint's a, no, no, they won't touch paint.
Oil.
Oil, yeah, so it's up itself. Destruction, demolition material placed by residents or from work performed by contractor will not be collected. That also ties into why we don't do the wooden furniture anymore, because, you know, it's a byline. Why wouldn't you take my Winchester door and not my Q by four? So we just, we had to debate on that with, it's probably better off just not touching it anymore itself. Also, any item which is too large, you're heading to be safely removed by collection personnel. Let's go to it. All right. Speed the devil. Yes, okay. This is the problems we encounter. There's, these are the three big ones. The first one, just to let the community know, is waste management will not purposely miss your spot, but they're very good. You start at six AM in the morning, Waste Management actually has a tracking system, so they know where they're at and what time, so if we recall, you know, you skipped it, these guys do not skip people, so unless it's something, you know, unless we're aware of it, but they start at six AM, that's why it's important to have it out, you know, before six AM, and they're very good at it. The problem we encounter is excessive trash. If you go more than two cans curbside toders, a lot of times, it could be, it could be, it could be a dump, it could be kicking in for other people, it could be running businesses. We've had a couple instances, I guess, I guess the people itself either clean out houses or cleaned out storage units, and they don't see all kinds of stuff laid out there, because if we're cleaning out my basement, no, these guys are pretty good, they know. It's the one time shot they understand what's wrong, but week after week, they'll find us, hey, there's something going on out there, so the guys are pretty good at it, so that's, that's the issue we have. Carpet, ooh, carpet. It's really heavy when it's wet. They can't pick it up because it's recyclable, it's considered built-on construction debris. If they can petition and say, well, it's a pickup, oh, we picked up people.
Can the carpet be placed in a recyclable container and picked up? No carpet.
No carpet, exactly.
Yeah, but that's stated right there, as I was... Yeah, but that's stated right there, as I read, carpet can be extremely everyone wet. Got that? All right, I understand that, making it potentially unsafe, person will pick up. You take the wet out of there, then that means you'll pick it up.
No, we won't pick it up.
No, and that's.
What happens is, people will put it out there.
I understand what you're saying, but I understand what I'm reading right here. I'm not trying to, I just need to know, and they need to know.
Well, that's why I put it on your department, that's why.
Okay, that'd be good, then.
And which publishes the carpet?
We publish the carpet, so. It does. Enforcement. A lot of times, and this is, you know, my department, we can check all trees, but you get excessive, exactly, you've got excessive trash, we get carpet, we literally going out there, we have to stop all the services to handle this stuff, it's a grain of town service, so that's still the thing, you know, we always get penalized, it's the fault, because at the end of the day.
Back to your question about recycling carpet. The answer, the reason why people get confused with it, it can be recycled. I mean, if you were a warehouse that generated carpet, yes, they recycle their carpet, because they generate the volume enough to make it worthwhile to separate it, and they separate it at a site. Or you can't mix it with recycling, but you could recycle it. So that's where some people are like, well, it is recycling, yeah, if you generate thousands of tons.
It's a truckload.
Yeah. This is the problem we have with certain rental units. Most landlords are pretty good about it, however, we'll get the occasional move-out eviction, and that results in excessive amount of trash being placed curbside, where I'm going to vet somebody, and they just were reading out thinking that, you know, the town, you know, seals what, you know, kind of everything. When it comes to an addition itself, landlords must register the move-out to town, it's off the code, which I had referenced there. Landlords have four hours to place materials on public property, they need to get rid of it. If it comes in after the four hours, they have to get it, I will charge them, you know.
That's always a thing, so, and I did talk to the sheriff's deputy, he gives them different times, depending on how much material's there for the owner to come back, if it has to be placed outside for them to come get it, so four hours is kind of, doesn't work with what he's telling them.
If we're aware of it, that's one thing else, if we're aware of it, through the two of our departments, I'm fine with it, so we'll say, well, if we know they're coming back, I just think the ones living there.
Oh, yeah, a lot of them just.
Exactly.
Just jump, the people don't want, the landlord leaves it.
But if we get, if we get, if we get an eviction, something like that, we'll talk to trips department, say that we're, we're passing the petition.
I apologize for interrupting, but the code reads that a person has granted a period of time by the town not to exceed four hours to temporarily place or deposit a personal property of an evicted tenant on public sidewalk. So it's indicating that you have four hours to place it there, you have four-hour window for it to be on. I'm sorry to interrupt you, but I think that was important to point that out.
Got you, okay. Engineer step right there. Okay, so then there should play, that's a warehouse, that's a thing. Finally, landlords, some of them just need to be in the town's eviction procedure, because that's what the show said that way, which can, it can support you, so, you know, we'll be gay, we'll relocate all the stuff, so, some landlords will be nice, and you have that option. So now, what do we do with the stuff which is left over?
Well, you should say that.
So what we're proposing to do is we're thinking about having a few proposed community cleanups. And our tenet of dates now, with the board approved with it, will be Saturday, November fourteenth, and the twenty-first. We have to try to do these things maybe twice a year or something, and the way we're going to actually approach this is we're going to have dumpsters, and Waste Management will drop off dumpsters in neighborhoods on Friday, DPW staff will staff the dumpsters on Saturday, from like seven in the morning to eleven AM. After eleven AM, Waste Management will come in, take the dumpsters, and take them to the landfill for it, and help them do the cleanups. And our two of the thoughts is on the fourteenth, we like to set something else for Cowley, Lindsay Village, Water Hill, and the twenty-first, do something, you know, get to the courts, Baytown Circle, Elton Heights. And these areas could adjust, but this is where we initially thought. Again, Waste Management drops it off on Friday, after building material, that's your carpet, if there's anything else you don't take. The only thing that we cannot physically take are tires, freon, anything of that nature, but anything else which is like bulk items, we give the opportunity for the community to get rid of it, that's the town, so.
Let me ask you this question. Why wouldn't we put another dumpster there for tires? I'm just gonna.
If we know tires in a landfill, it's forty bucks a tire, right?
I, you know, I'll be honest with you, I'm not.
Because a landfill, because, yeah, Cecil County, if you have a dumpster, you have a, a big bucket goes in, and you see it's not a tire, it's forty bucks, everyone can see, any tire in the himself itself. If we know there's a bunch, we do, the town itself, DPW just collect tires, that's one thing, if they take it to two-and-a-half Blue Ball, those are not rims, we'll take it, because we are a tire collection agency, so we can do it that way, so, there's another benefit to it. If we know there's a bunch, and we hear about it, we don't mind doing dumpsters, and we try to do, we don't wish it that way, so. But this is our initial idea for the cleanup itself, we took like three areas, we try to get different parts of the town, so. If we do three, three at a time will work out, because we can actually put them down, man it, and everybody go the same day. But if we need dumpsters too long, that's your fun, right? We have to stop, so. And you're too close to the Delaware line, that's the only reason why.
It is how we know we're catering just to this area and not to anybody and everybody that just wants to dump that day.
Well, that's why, well, the DPW have a crew there, do we know? I'm not sure, you know, I also just have my guys to staff it, and help, you know, load the material to the.
It definitely, when you have somebody there who prevents them from this dump coming in, and, you know, they come over and they see it, they see an employee of the town standing there, and it's going to make them think twice before they're going to pull up, you know, they have Delaware tags or something, whatever it is that they might see, and that's one of the things, I've seen it in the past, where I've always suggested you have an employee try to man that for a while, you know, just to prevent people from doing things like that, and/or the hazardous waste gets in there. You know, God forbid something, you know, really nasty gets in there, the whole load gets contaminated, and very expensive to get rid of.
But that's our initial plan for the cleanup, that the fourteenth and twenty-first.
Very good. Well, the, I guess the, kind of the comment that I have is, I want to say, there is absolutely no doubt in my mind that we perform to the needs of our residents. Whether a resident puts something that you just asked them not to put out there, we pick it up, because you'll get a call from one of us and say, please pick that up, because we want to make sure that our town looks great. I know, I know you do, and I know it takes, by us making that phone call to pick up item A over here, it takes them away from doing a storm drain over here. I think, and I hope that, and I'm going to lobby into that support, that manual that we're working on right now, the manual that I brought to the board about a month ago, and we're working on it, I've got, I think Janey is doing some prop work here for it, but it's the manual that College Park Maryland had, that had all this clear, clearly and precisely laid out for the residents of our town, all departments. The, because I think that the issue isn't really us, the issue is, our residents aren't following the rules, because they probably don't know the rules as well as we know the rules, and we just have to make them understand what we're going to do it, how we're going to do it, and when we're going to do it. And I think that our amount of, I want to say, the rentals that we have in the town of Elton is probably close to fifty percent. So as we all know, in a rental side of things, they're in and out, they could be here for six months, or maybe they may miss when their landlord told them that, hey, here's the rules, maybe we have to have a meeting where we have the landlords in here and say, listen, these are the rules, and you have to get your tenants to follow these to help us out. So we are here to help, I think that we all feel that way, and I think that we'll have that, I think as we move forward, we're going to be able to nip all these a little bit better, I think, for you.
That leads into my questions on here. I was just approached yesterday, questioning about trash pickup, grass pickup, leaves, and one of the things that was mentioned was not everyone reads the paper, not everyone has a computer, and they follow everything on the computer. What are we doing to reach out to these taxpayers that don't read the paper or use the computer?
If most, if they call the office, we tell them, we'll get a couple of those calls, at least, you know, at least this week, you know, we'll say, where are you moving into? I just moved in, because a lot of times they'll call us, they're under orders, they think we're taking orders for a bill, because at the same time, when you move in, we explain it to them, exactly, when you go back.
I may be, this is the form you would have asked him, these are the long-term taxpayers, the residents that fit around a while, that just don't mess with the computer, and probably is not following anything on the paper. So they're asking, I told them, we've tried to at least put it on water bill, if there's some kind of a change or something would be, but what else are we going to touch base with these taxpayers? Just to have them phone call you, is that what I'm hearing?
Hang on, the lawnmower people are pretty good, I mean, honestly, I think about ninety-five, ninety-six percent or five, I mean, that's, I mean, that's another issue. The long-term people, a lot of times, they'll call us if something happens, we're the first call, and from there, we try to.
So are we going to be getting these out to all the residents? That's one of the questions I'm asking. These, this here, is this going out to all the residents?
It's up to, it's up to make, get sure on this. If the board instructs our administrative staff to nail out the brochures to every resident, we'll do it. Very expensive to do that, because it's over six thousand brochures that will go out, very, very expensive, but as long as the taxpayers want that service, we'll provide it. There's several papers, all the boards would do that.
That's an idea as well. I've seen that happen a lot, is the town paper that will post it, you know, courtesy to the town, is, you know, something I respect.
I see the challenge, I know, of course, my wife does a great job of putting the trash out, the recyclables out.
You are the.
Yeah, she does a great job in doing it, and, but she doesn't miss a beat, she knows. I see all the issues more, more than the everyday customers, more so than the ones that just moved in, and they don't have this brochure in front of them, so we've got to figure out how, how is there a way that we can get the landlord to give this to his tenant every time a new tenant moves in? That's his responsibility.
They look, see the next door neighbor put out, and then they.
That's what they do.
And then they find out that both of you have trash out, and they just got to tell them all. I run that all the time. We probably have pushing three thousand rentals.
Yes.
So out of those three thousand, maybe have several hundred actually LLCs, or partnerships, or ventures, whatever, that own all these. Communicate with all those different parties to ensure that they provide this to the tenants would be a very difficult task. But most tenants, most property owners, landlords, do use computers, you know what I mean? So we could probably post something, I think they have a real estate office over here, you know, like landlords and all that, might be able to get it out to them, because they do access computer information and get it from our website.
I think our biggest challenge.
You're not going to have, you have to send it to them.
I agree with Earl, I think our issue is probably more communication, how we get that communication to the residents, and making sure that they follow that, what we just laid out to them.
The main thing we strive for, I think, is consistency, that's the main thing, that's why most people, you know, Jim's Lane, or James's Round, they're going to stay that way, but, which is kind of clarify, we pick up, don't pick up, at the end of the day, we still try to. I mean, how long do you have to send it, but it's something, that's why, that's why it was very big with consistency, and we try not to change anything.
Any other questions?
No, I just wrote the word down, and it's pretty much like you and Earl, it's just education, how to educate the people to understand what the process is. About the old lemon, you know, many times you and I have gone out to town with, because of tenants putting trash out that shouldn't be out there, and again, it goes back to, it'd be a decision that we have to come up with, how you're going to, communicate with them.
The one that you can't communicate is, you know, if you consider excessive trash pickup, or my guy is equivalent to, like, cutting grass or something like that, I mean, we can charge town, for like two hundred dollars, and then a hundred thirty dollars in straight fees, that'll open up their eyes, but I don't want to get that.
Well, the house we run to, I don't know, they didn't open their eyes up, because they'll be here one week, and another week, they're not there.
Trying to, that's what I was trying to figure out.
Very good, well, thank you. Thank you guys, good luck. What do you pitch? I think the next item is probably on mine on the budget timeframe. We had talked about developing a timeframe to, I don't really want to use the word expedite, expedite the budget, but we want to have the, hopefully, the budget in order and voted on prior to the next election, is the goal for me. And that election is in May. I don't know if that's, I don't know if it's going to be reasonable to make that happen. I know we're going to go through this exercise, because we felt, we had one member on the board felt that he didn't have enough time, and I wish he was here to be able to give his opinion on it, but he, I'm sure he is, in regards to having the amount of time to review the budgets. So I have committed to make sure that we're going to start our workshops for each department a little bit sooner, and I think we've already got the police scheduled for November. I think they'll have their budgeting in process. I think that we can get the expenditure side, per se, from all the budgets, but I don't know if we're going to be able to really capture all the revenue side.
We don't catch your revenue until February, March.
We're going to do the assessments for them in February.
Well, we're going to do the best that we can, and.
You can estimate it.
We'll estimate it the best that we can. Is everyone, I mean, just think about it, but I still want to get the departments in and start that process as quickly as we can.
Are you envisioning them coming in and presenting it like you had in the past with it all in detail, or maybe, in my way, so maybe capital items, or any, 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 any fast action, or staffing, or additional staffing?
My belief is, will be less capital. My goal is less capital expenditures going into next year's budget. I think that we acquired a lot of capital equipment, and I don't really foresee us needing a lot of capital equipment next year, that's my thinking or belief, unless there's something else that comes up. But I think that, I liked it how we had it last year. I knew that we're not going to have the information page by page that was provided to me, but I think, I think it'd be great that if every department maybe could spend fifteen or twenty minutes with the commissioners and myself, and leading, maybe through December and through January, and we'll take.
The highlights.
Highlights would be great. Do you guys feel like, highlights?
It's good, what you're trying to do, yeah, but then, when there is more detail, the vision, the vision works out, so.
No, I don't think we'll need it. I will be involved in it. Thank you. All right, scrap hill maintenance. What do we got? Well, actually, the scrap hill maintenance project. We've got these little fruit flies flying around here, is that what, seeing them fruit flies? I thought it was just me, they're like attacking me here today. You not seeing that? I got these little flies.
The way we're maintaining it now is probably for expensive.
You're familiar with it, right? This is the McCool Hill. Currently, currently, if you look at the back of Howard Street, there's a real Steve Hill, it used to be connected, it's connected to the children's hour and the McCool Hill. We've, I think we've determined that we own that hill?
Some of it. Some of it's owned by the mayor and commissioners, and some of it's owned by senior junior LLCs in the McCool's. Unfortunately, it is owned by the McCool's, and unfortunately, it's owned by us.
We've been maintaining that hill, and it's actually, I'm okay with the direction we're going right now, as far as keeping it moved down, but I think that there's an opportunity here at some point, maybe we can tier that to where it's easier to maintain.
The, we can't tier it, we probably need a landscape architect to design it, because right now, the hill's stable. Once you disturb it and destabilize it, you have aerobic issues. So what we can do is, if you have it professionally done, you'll come up with ways in which to stabilize the hill post-construction or going construction, because once you are tearing out that thing, the next rainstorm's going to all be down the Florida line. It's been there a hundred, a couple hundred years, so.
And I'm looking at it. And I'm looking at it, will it become easier for us to maintain if we do some additional work there? If it doesn't become easier for us to maintain and creates more work for our public works department, I'm not looking at going that direction.
What's a plant you want to put there? I'm going to put some type of plant that would.
The plants would look great up there. Well, give it some thought when you go by there, take a look at it, see if there's anything you can do. Any questions on?
No, I have none.
All right. Lou, we're gonna, let's pass, let's pass on the trap meter release right now, I don't think there's anyone here in regards to that. But let's go right to the rec center if we could. Come on down, Mr. Brian. And Ms. Mary, come on down here.
The, the school will, well, what we've learned so far is that we probably have to go into a long-term lease of the property. And by leasing the property, we'll have an agreement between these kind of other schools in the town because they have a certain property. And then we would have to have the site plan prepared and approved by the school board and any subsequent design of the building and everything. But we wouldn't go through a subdivision process anymore because we're not going to subdivide it. So I guess the next step after you have kids with preliminary ideas about what you're going to do is to get a site plan, get it to the school so they can prove where the building, tax is going to be situated.
And I don't want, of course, I guess what my thinking of this has been, I think other than, I think you're looking at the three, three young guys up here that have a passion for this project to move forward. And I know that we've talked about this for years and years and years and years. I know we've had you on the high cycle and the low cycle many a times, Mary. I think that there's a need for recreation in our town, indoor facility for not only our youth, but also our seniors that can be used for residents of all ages. And the challenging part that I have is that I, I have reviewed what we had, I don't know, X amount of years ago, let's say eight years ago. And then I, I was reviewing some other plans from like five years ago. And these projects blew up to six and seven and eight million dollars, there was like two different ones through. And, and I, I believe that we can fill the need of recreation by keeping it as simple as we can. When I say simple as we can, you know, a wide open space that equals so much area for recreational use and provide in it offices, maybe a concession, bathrooms. But the majority of the building is, is open space that we can use for our venues. Michelle had put here on the slide a few different concepts and actually this was one that was right on the website of what other, another entity did. What I liked about this one, you have a walking track at the top, which also provides a viewing area for the venue. Now this is a smaller version, this is only about a, one gymnasium facility. My view is I think we should have something that actually is about the size of three gymnasiums, which is about twenty-two to twenty-five thousand square feet. But one of the gymnasium sized areas would be the area that would host the utility rooms, the bathrooms, the concession areas and the remainder of the classrooms. So you would have a total of probably six or seven thousand square feet that would be used for, for that type of area. And then that would always leave you two full court gymnasiums that could be used for volleyball, adult volleyball leagues, indoor soccer, basketball tournaments, field hockey tournaments, the dance programs, kickball leagues, whatever it may be. But we'd have an indoor venue for us to use. Now, I'm not even sure when I look at these after I talk to Chip, there's additional things that we'd have to worry about. Probably even if we go with a venue like this, we'd probably have to put an elevator in it. If you're going to use the second, second area for, for, for walking. And when you have over twelve thousand square feet, this, this picture here is probably, my, my gut feeling is, is this is probably a eight thousand to ten thousand square foot building venue here because I don't see any sprinkler systems in it and I think that we know the code is under.
Twelve thousand.
Twelve thousand or under. So that's another thing that we've got to keep in mind, we build something twenty-five thousand square feet. Now we've got sprinkler heads or some type of pressure system that we have to have in this venue. And they make them where they're protected so the ball hits it, it's not going to go all over the place or so forth. But this was one concept, can you hit the, let's see what the, some of the other ones were. This is, this was probably, this is probably close to two, maybe three gymnasiums long with the same type of walking back, gives you a little bit more. That's probably closer to what my vision is to that degree. Let's go to the next one, see what the next one is. Different, different types of items that you can put in, different painting of the floor, different types of floors and so forth. And then the final one is a very small section of a single gymnasium. So I guess where our hiccup, I think where I feel there's a hiccup at in this is that if we do what we did in the past, we brought in a architect to design the building, we brought in to, to, to put all the pieces together. Then we had this and then we went to here and then we went to here. I would almost like to see how we can work with KCI and get them to maybe build this concept of what we want. And then bring in design and build entities, which Brian, I think you mentioned that there's quite a few out there. And then we would take kind of our design and say, here's our design, here's the dollars that we, our, kind of our dollar number that we're looking at. Show us what you can do or how you can do it for that. Is that how I'm thinking, right?
Sure.
I don't want to speak for you, but.
I've seen it done a couple of different ways, we talked a little bit about the design. And, you know, you could, you could canvas design options as part of the design build proposal. So each design build team would submit a concept that they felt was the best fit for your program elements. You would have to give them minimum criteria like the twenty-five thousand square feet, the number of athletic courts that you would look to have. And you can include that in as part of the proposal package and then you can review those concepts and pick the best one based on what the team submitted. Or you could also, you know, you could provide the concept to have a level playing field for the bidders and, you know, the basic specifications and elements that you want to see, minimum program requirement. And then let them bring the pricing in and you can make the comparison there. Design build is, you know, becoming increasingly more popular all the time. And, you know, one of the reasons that we see it allows you to get some products delivered quicker because you can, you know, you're kind of working it go. You get the site package done, they're working on the site package while the building is being refined. You know, so you have the building designed at sixty-five percent while the site is underway. You know, just moves the process along.
Mary, what comments do you have or criteria you're looking for in this project? Am I missing something? Maybe I am. Maybe I'm off base.
No, I just wanted to make sure that we were on the same page about what we want in the building. So that was my concern, so we're on the building that we believe is, and that's, and not one that. I guess we need court space, but we also need pressure tanks. We don't have it.
Charlie, any?
I'm pretty much like that she is too, you know, what can accommodate the needs and certainly having a classroom of not only teaching, but for other multiple activities. Certainly is a plus to the, to the building that's going to have.
Earl, any?
I'm glad you asked. No, this is one thing I have to get, you know, I have a passion for and I know what Mary's looking for. I understand what the board was, was trying to do in years to come, but, I mean, years passed. One of the things that I've got to make sure that I state is that all of the fifty-eight years I've been here in Elton, we have never had a place that we can say that we can take the, not just the kids, but the elderly people out of the rain or out of the hot sun and go in and run a program. So, I mean, even though we talk about the size of the building, where, what we can afford, whatever, some people may think we don't need it. But then when you look at what other towns have and what cities have, we have someplace for the kids to go and not to the YMCA because that's entity of their own, not saying that's the town's building. But yet we want someplace where we can get the kids out of the heat or out of the rain and have some kind of activity where they can go in and be a part of a program that is provided by the town. And with the gymnasium and we've been to Gettysburg, is that right, Gettysburg? I'm sorry, a beautiful facility where they have the three gyms, you can look down and see every different gym level. And then you had the classrooms, they had the dance room, they had the row instructors, everything going on in this place. And I was really amazed with the, the size of the building. And what we're looking for now is not to try to see if we can match another big facility. We're trying to see what we can provide for the town of Elton that will accommodate the residents and the youth as they grow into this building. There's all kinds of programs to be running to that, Mary, and I know you, you have your heart set around just getting the building up and not a downfall in like we had before. But I'm pushing, all I can do right now is to try to make this thing happen. Not be along with contractors saying they can't do this, can't do that, and then we got to provide this. We want to get one shot deal and let's go with it.
I, I think going to the program side, we'll work on the, the cost side of will it justify itself? And, you know, from a budgeting standpoint, I think that it's always shown that our recreation side has been in a deficit compared to the, the revenues coming in. And, and because of, I mean, the reason for that is because we've encouraged that. We've, we've encouraged that we wanted programs in place that are for our residents. I think that by having a facility like this, I think that tide's going to change a little bit. It's going to give us the opportunity to change that. And, and you know, I'll tell you selfishly, one thing that I'd be looking for in this venue is, I can see on a Monday night or a Tuesday night, you got fifteen teams of ten adult co-ed volleyball leagues going on. And you're, you're doing your thing here on a eight to nine and guess where we're going to go? We're going to go downtown and have a, an adult beverage or a sandwich after we're done. That's the way I envision some of the venues that will be able to work here. I just see, this is a, not only as a recreational tool, I see it also as an economic tool for us to a degree. And the, the venues that we'll have on Fridays, Saturdays and Sundays that are not town events, it's going to be maybe a field hockey tournament that's being put on or a volleyball tournament or a basketball, AAU, what is that called? AAU tournament. And these generate dollars for just using our space of our facility. So.
We host a lot of Olympic event, like the, what's the one up to the school, high school? I'm trying to think of the event we run up to high school, if it rains and, for the church.
Yeah, I can't think of the name.
I can't think of it now, but I know we host a lot of events, especially, I couldn't think of the word, yeah. And this would be a nice.
And a relay flag, and a relay flag.
For backup in case it rains, at least we have someplace for them to host that event. And I always thought about that every time I go there, trying to push this through.
Can you handle the floor layout and, and the, the requirements if we can meet with you maybe? And then we can put that together to maybe go to that next step. Because this thing is, it's pretty hot right now and I think that if we can, we've got to strike why the county and the school board is willing to enter into this agreement. Lou, do you have any concerns about the, the, this direction or what you're thinking?
No, you want KCI to do a conceptual plan?
Yes.
Okay, then that conceptual plan, you're going to attach a number bill.
Yes.
So like, let's say you want to spend two million for this thing.
Less than two million.
Okay, you spend one million for it, then you give it to design build, see if they can build it for a million.
That's my thinking.
It's a challenge.
It is a challenge. But it can be called a KCI building.
I just want to let everyone know that.
But I, I still think, and you got a point, it's got to go back to Mary because you, when billing anything when it comes to that, you've got to have somebody earmarked, it's going to be the youth, which it is going to be, the adults is going to be, and you also mentioned, you know, elderly people. And, you know, when you think of elderly, you're thinking of programs apart from youth, like fitness, a room there, a dance room or aquatics, a thing that, you know, they can, you know, really use. It just takes a lot, which goes into his planning, how do I put a bill to accomplish all of this, so.
Well, you're going to need a site plan first because this is the kind of school board will want to look at the site plan and you have to have that approved, then you go into your concept design, you'll have to approve that too because you're on their property. So there would be, before you get into the design build part of it, you actually need the school board support. Where the, I don't know, the board is going to build a very lowest of office.
They need that. Do we need anything, Brian, do we need anything else to?
I mean, I think if we can have a dialogue and figure out what kind of program elements you want to see, you know, number of courts, we got a basic field for square footage and put those minimum components together, then, you know, the, the school board property is pretty good sized for it. I mean, the level, you've got parking, you know, there's, there's decent access there, I mean, there are a lot of positives there.
We're going to build a new road.
The integration with seniors, I know a town that has some pretty spectacular amenities off of seniors right now. There's some pretty cool projects that have happened and, you know, that would be, that would be a great, a great mesh as well. So a lot, a lot of good ideas, we'd love to help in any way that we can.
So maybe I suggest that we sit down with Mary, maybe next week, sooner or better. Sit down and get her plan to what she wants in there. We, as the mayor and commissioners, all come together with what her needs are, and we sit down and then we take the plan to KCI and let them.
Can you start creating your needs? Mr. Lemon, you got a question?
Would you, let's say like the fire department, consider outside sources of revenue?
My, my standpoint would be yes.
Because you've already discussed the problems of building up enough revenue to offset the expenses. Then the other question I have is why wouldn't you go to some facilities in other towns and look at them and see if you can, like them, just bring in.
We have, we've been to a number of towns already. We went to Bel Air, we went to.
Havering Grace.
We went to.
We've been tracking them now.
Yeah, we've been to a lot of.
No way you can just get somebody's.
They're very expensive, the facilities, though.
Yeah, they are.
I said, I said first time that we need to model this similar to starting our plan like we have on Newark Road, Elton Christian School. Just something where we can get in and then model it from there what we want. And then that's where I said to start. And then one of the things that threw us out before was, and no disrespect to anybody for bringing this up, but if we're going to do it, we model the door right. And we started looking for the bigger Richard, which we don't have the money for. We have to start in a small section and build on and then build from that.
I understand that if you go to buy a car and you see the Cadillacs and you know, like the Chevilles, which you go forward.
Yes.
But it just seems to me that, you know, well, you say you've looked a few places, that would be an easy way to do it.
And incorporate the solar part, once we get everything going.
I'd love to, I'd love to see a solar reform.
So there's the things, we, once we get the, the idea, then we start getting the efficient part of it, the efficiency part of it. So we work on it one step at a time.
Brian, thank you. What we'll do is we'll get with Mary, start putting your, your absolute needs, the minimum needs. And then we'll, Mary up here with Brian. Thank you so much.
You, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Brian.
I think all this Monday morning, I'm ready to put that there.
Yeah, send me, send me a copy of what you have there.
I read, I read Stephen, I've already got one.
Tell it to, we're going to get one for Christmas.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. It's nice to be here.
I know, I know that I...
Okay, we're on the trap neuter and release program. No, no, we can, we can talk about it real quickly. I just wanted to let you know that trap neuter release program, I just wanted to kind of bring everyone up. I met with Dr. Garletti about two months ago. And I think I mentioned at the town meeting, she brought to light to me about what they've been doing over the last several years with volunteer money. They, they've been trapping cats. They've been clipping their ears, giving them a tattoo and neutering them and, and bringing them back to release them. And there's a little bit more to that. She stated that she always gives them the, the rabies shot and makes sure that with, I guess what I'm saying is what happened in Delaware just recently with the little kitten developing, having rabies and then infected, I don't know, 12, 13, 14 people, kind of raised a little bit of concern for me, more for our citizens. And I don't want to say not for the cats, but I'm more worried about our citizens of our town and their health and welfare and well-being. So during my discussion with her, she stated to me that there's, could be as many as 400 cats behind the Big Elk Mall that had been dropped off and released that have not been treated by any type of program. I don't know if that's true or not true. I'm not, I, I don't know. So, but like, if there is 400 cats over there, I think that we have to come up with some type of game plan to make sure that they're safe for our community. And, and I think that's the point I'm trying to get across here. The trap neuter release program, the bottom line is it's about $50 per cat to capture one, to, to treat it with a shot and to neuter and then bring it back and release it. So we had budgeted $1,500 to take care of, we budgeted, I think, $1,500 on, on, with the, I think it was, I think Steve's looking at it. Yeah, I think it was only going to allow us to do 30 cats. I'm not sure what we budgeted on there, it was $1,500. But I just wanted to throw that out there for everyone to think about the next meeting. We can move forward with maybe trying to take care of 30 of them this year and 30 the next year and 30 the following year, if at all possible. But something we might want to really consider. Any questions or comments?
I was out to the, in the woods behind the mall yesterday with my pastor and some other officials here. I guess they went out there to talk to people homeless. And on that end, we went in, it was no problem. But when we left that end to go towards the actment, probably saw about nine cats, four or five cats just running around. So I don't know how many others were out there, but just sitting at your home facility there was quite a bit.
Maybe if we take a can of tuna fish out there, we'll see how many come running.
Well, I think there's a lady that actually goes out there, not actually, there is a lady that actually goes out there. I don't know how much she had bought for all of them, but...
I, I don't know. I think if, if it is that type of, that many cats out there, we probably have to take a look at it at some point, so...
There will be a number.
Okay, everyone kind of take a look at that moving forward, so. I don't need to talk about TNR anymore. Was it $1,500? $1,200. Yeah, so it was 40 or 24 cats. Yeah, so it wouldn't be many. The last thing we had on the agenda was the water sewer building for nonprofits. I'm not sure if we're prepared to talk about this. I think we had, or maybe you are.
Well, we were bouncing on how this would be reflected in going. I think the real challenge would be identifying exactly what's copied. And if you want to trap in government buildings, you know, with nonprofits, which is, you know, the prison, you know, the detention center, the wise and nonprofit. You know, that must be a relief on the first 9,000 gallons. But would we feel comfortable, we can accomplish that by generating a bill? That could be zero bill or just the amount, except for 9,000 gallons, you know, where accounts that aren't currently set up to be built. Or somebody's are currently set up to be built at first.
I think, Steve, I think what we'll do is bring it to the board at, at the regular meeting. My gut feeling is I don't think there's enough support to, to...
Move forward.
Move forward with it. That's kind of my gut feeling, so. I think that it might be one that we'll, we'll bring up to the town board and we'll see if they want to move forward collectively to do it. I think when we identified 140 or...
It cut nerves down.
It, it got nerve...
But there were no churches on there. I think you want to revisit that, that larger list to see.
Yes.
It starts to affect the people that are regular, regular water customers that's been here for years and years. And then we're giving away water where these, these taxpayers have been paying all this time. And there's a fairness issue that I feel. After looking and listening to this, even me, why am I not getting a break after all these years? But before I wanted to go into just pay by usage. But then we wanted to do that for the seniors. And I remember it came into a discrimination thing. So what I feel is though, if we do, for one, we got to do for all.
Well, that's the point in theory, if you give someone a break and someone else is paying more than their fair share, someone is not paying.
You have, you have to have a, you have to have a stream of revenue that will allow our water sewer to operate independently. So if you cut the expense to some, the others will have to make up, make up for that cost. Because you can't diminish your revenue and sustain operating the water and waste water treatment, so.
Help me understand this stuff. One of the reasons why we're doing what we're doing is we have to pay for our water sewer, I mean, our, our sewer plant.
A sewer plant.
Once we get, once we get that bill down for that place there, I'm ready to cut and do whatever we have to do to give the money back to the taxpayers. I'm just saying that, I'm going to say that for right now.
I can tell you that, that debt service, when that has expired, will be probably one day there to increase maintenance to it and increase operating.
I'm talking about the cost of the building. We're banning for the facility to do that service, talk about that service.
When, when the, when the debt service runs out on treatment plant, it'll be, we'll be talking about replacing major components of that land, which will incur additional debt.
Not when you hold a car, if you've been paying for it, and you have a car long enough, you end up probably having to put some equal down into repairs to keep the car in road. So you kind of replace, that service and everything.
We're going to find a way.
Yeah, but I'm like DJ, and I know he's not here. Do you have a list of nonprofits that subscribe to not paying for water? And each of those, you also have the amount of water that they use. And in addition to those, what if they use that amount of water, what was that cost that we would not be getting? You see what I'm saying? Listing, usage, and what would be the amount?
Yeah.
I'm saying, do you have a list generated?
We're not, on my cover, right now we have an inclusive list of everyone we can talk about. The, the math part is easy because we know what the value of 9,000 gallons is. If that was your intent to offer the first 9,000 gallons, which equates to minimal billing as a no charge quantity. But until we get a, a better handle on exactly...
So you don't have a good listing yet?
No, we, there's a listing that was written down, it doesn't include the churches. And what is your intention, do governments come in, you know, the state want that purpose building?
Well, why don't you come up with a, with just the regular list you got, at least let us see what you have, even though you're going to make changes to that list. So we all have an idea what they are and who they are. Does that make sense?
Sure.
Very good. This meeting's adjourned.